Okay.
Hey, how are you guys?
Hey, Julie.
Hey, Julie. Great. How are you guys?
Doing good.
How are you?
Two closed sessions.
Yes, yes. You worried I'm just gonna like... That's a big deal. There's... I know a lot of people there. Valerie. Yes. And Karen. So it's for like half. We should go next year.
Whatever you want.
I'm like, this is my most... Yeah.
Only thing we're going to do is...
It was like...
Okay.
And like I sat next to... Sue Ben.
Okay, okay.
Carrow.
Sounds good.
Maybe they were telling us in the past. There are a lot of people out there. And then they're also... I thought it was interesting. It was good. The speaker was really good. So next year you should definitely go. Because I guess you're always forever invited. So. Is this a cookie?
Get on time. We will consider ourselves an open session for the Monday, June 3rd, 2024 regular Board of Education meeting. I'd like to make a motion that we add, or amend the agenda to add an additional closed session with the same listing, A, B, C, and D, at the end. I believe that would be number 15, and move the adjournment to number 16.
So moved.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed light signs? Thank you. All right, we will... I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for the items listed on the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed light sign? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. While we're in closed session tonight, we have a treat for you. Our robotics team is in the Room B, I believe that is, or Room A, right to your right there, with a demonstration for those while you're waiting tonight. I would really appreciate if you all would go in and support them by seeing the work that they're doing. And by the time you're done, we should be back.
Go check them out. Hey, Neil. How are you? See ya. Let's see, do I need anything else this time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody ready to go? Good to go. Make sure your mics are on, please, if you will. Okay, we'll consider ourselves back in open session. Thank you for your patience. We've got a great tour in there of the robotics school. So that's wonderful. Thank you all for taking the time to be here. And I know busy schedules end of the year, but we appreciate it tremendously. Let's all pause right now. I know it's the end of the year and we have people going everywhere and our students are driving everywhere and maybe vacationing too. So, you know, just be thinking about safety and safety protocols and what our students are going to do after graduation and everything else. So just keep those in your mind, if you will. Let's have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Let's all stand for our pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Got a motion in second? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, like, sign? Do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda? Got a motion in a second? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move. Second.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? Okay. Dr. Jordan, we're, excuse me, Dr. Jackson, we're at superintendent's announcements, comments. Long time, see, it's, it's the end of the year, you can tell. That's several years ago now.
I'm good.
Superintendent's announcements and comments, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chu. Thank you so much. I just want to go very quickly through. We have some great announcements and normally I try not to hit all of them, but there's just so many good ones. It's the end of the year and we do a lot of celebrating here in Chatham County. And so I'm excited about that. And then just to say this out loud, I'm extremely proud of the work that happens every single day in our school system. And I just love to be able to celebrate that. You got to see it, get a taste of that in the room next door. Those students, I was at their Saturday event and they'll tell you, I said, "You guys have got to come and just kind of show this off and show the bot off," all of that kind of stuff. So it's great when we get to see that work. So I just want to quickly run through a few items that have happened over the past month since our last meeting. Again, congratulations to Mr. Robinson and Tracy Miller for being recognized at our state level for their work with student activities and really growing student activities in our school system. Both are at George Moses Horton, but really are reflective of the work that happens across the district. So thank you for that. Next slide, please. We recognize every year, this is our second year of recognizing the top 10% of the class across the district. And this is one of those things that I'm hoping will become just a staple in the end of the year activities here, where we bring all of those kids who have really given themselves and poured out themselves academically across the district together to celebrate, bring their families together, and then to just celebrate just their attention to academic detail. We had a great evening at C-4th this year and we're excited about that. Next slide, please. The Northwood Art Show is always a hit. Just want to show you some of the items that were there. All of our schools do year-end art shows, but this, you know, we, this is an example. All of our schools do year-end art shows, but this, you know, we, this is an example of just some of the artwork that you will get to see if you attend any of those art shows. Next slide, please. We had the CEF Excellence in Education Breakfast, which again is an annual event, and we want to thank our education foundation for their work constantly. We, our students were able to share their work, share how much Avid has impacted their lives and their work, and so we're excited about that. And they're also able to raise money to help support the work of the foundation and their support of our teachers. Next slide. The board approved recently the change in our EL curriculum in our elementary level, that's our language arts curriculum, and so we're starting the strategic and intentional training for that and making sure that when we launch that in the fall, that everyone is ready. So, it starts now, it doesn't start right, it doesn't, we don't wait till the summer, and so we're excited about getting that work off the ground, and the training has been amazing. The next slide, please. The Young Author Celebration was phenomenal. We had well over, and please correct me if I miss it, well over 400 entries into our Young Authors Competition this year, and we've recognized the, those winners this year, and so I want to thank Dr. Carol Bergen for the work there, and we had our author here to celebrate the work. And all of those kids, I was at a school this past week, and a student was saying, "I'm a published author," and I was like, "Thank you." So, that's amazing. They become, they become what we challenge them to be. Next slide, the, our athletic trainer, Ms. Jackie Harfum, over at Northwood, is the Athletic Trainer of the Year for the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, so we're excited for her and proud of the work that she does. Next slide. We, our commencement season is off and running, and so we had our first commencement of the year, the Chatham Early College. Well, it's actually the second. We had our One Academy in January, but Chatham Early College had their first end-of-the-year commencement that was held last week, and we graduated 25 or 26, but I will, 26, and I will tell you that, of special note, they are 23 of the 26 earned an associate's degree, an associate's degree at the same time that they've earned their high school diploma. That ought to get a, kind of a... That's amazing to me. I went to college, it was hard to get a college degree when I was supposed to get a college degree, let alone getting two at the same time. So, our students are able to do amazing things, if we expect that. Frozen, the production is over, but our students are still going out, and thanks to the work and the foundation and working with the JM Arts Group, they've had storytime, where our kids are still exposing our kids to the storytime with those students from the, from the show. JM High School Dual Language Senior Celebration, I had the opportunity to attend, and I was so very impressed with the fact that every student that got up talked about the dual-language program being a part of who they are since kindergarten, and that they've invested in the program. One of the things I love about Chatham County is that we stick to it. Avid and Dual Language, those are longstanding programs where this community has made the commitment, and we've stuck to it. So, that makes a big difference in terms of making sure that our kids can benefit from stuff. We work through it and get through the other things. Our, next slide, please. Our retirement celebration, we sent home nearly 1,000 years of experience, and we're going to miss that, but our, these individuals have earned the right to wave goodbye, and so we are excited about that. But we were just, had a wonderful evening celebrating those who have done their years of service and who have given and filled the buckets of many of our students over the years. And then our next one is our Strings Program, which we started two years ago, is now in its second year at Silo City and Virginia Cross Elementary Schools, and they had their performance last week, and due to conflict, I wasn't able to get there, but I was, I thanked Sharon Allen for videotaping it and sending me video clips of the entire thing, so we were excited about that. But they look like professionals on their way to Carnegie Hall, don't they?
Yes.
And then the next item, our C-4th Golf Team won the individual state championship, Ty Willoughby. That's a golfer's name, by the way, it's just really, should be. And so, we're excited for that. C-4th also had a, Jack Anstrom, who also won the state championship. I think this is Jack's fourth or fifth individual, fifth individual track championship. And then the C-4th Girls Soccer played for the 2A Championship Game on Saturday, and I'm pleased to report that they won the state championship. Give them a hand. There's a lot of things going on here in Chatham County, and our kids are doing great, and I just want to say to you all, thank you so very much for your support in helping us realize our commitment to building that community that helps every child reach their hopes and dreams. So, thank you so much. We'll move on from there.
From Ms. Melanie Hunter, Secretary for the NCAE Division of Principals and Administrators. So, this time, I'll call Ms. Hunter to the podium for the special presentation.
Good evening. I bring you greetings from the North Carolina Association of Educators, or NCAE, Principals and Administrators Division. The NCAE Division of Principals and Administrators represents members who hold leadership positions within a school district. These roles include central office, central office staff principals, assistant principals, superintendents, and past presidents. I serve as a division secretary, and I represent Region 7A in Edcom County. Each county nominates individuals for this award who represent the best of us, who are in good standing, and who lead in one of the roles I mentioned. This, the recognition that I will present tonight represents a nominee who exemplifies leadership within their own county, as well as representing NCAE organization through continuous advocacy. Dr. Anthony Jackson embodies the fundamental tenets of our NCAE organization. The evidence of his leadership in innovative, thinking outcomes include increased student achievement, increased high school graduation rates, and unparalleled professional development for our leaders who serve under him. Dr. Jackson is a transformative leader who is familiar with integral parts of education. His background includes working as a classified employee, then tirelessly working toward, upward toward the ranks to becoming the superintendent that serves this county. I have had the pleasure of working under Dr. Jackson's leadership in two diverse counties. Each experience working under his leadership improved my abilities to teach, learn, and thrive. My gratitude for his commitment to teaching and learning is heartfelt and sincere. This remarkable individual understands the importance of unity and empowerment. He does not dwell on obstacles nor opposition, but rather, he is unwavering in his belief in the possible. While Dr. Jackson is no stranger to success, this award recognizes how he expands his reach to give voice to all those in education. I am eternally grateful and honored that I get to present this award to a remarkable human, my revolutionary mentor and a person who does not just dream big, but brings big dreams to reality. It is such an honor to award the 2024 North Carolina Association of Educators Division of Principals and Administrators Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Anthony Jackson.
Make him come in front and shake our hand, too. You'll wave, okay. Congratulations. I don't know that, that was a powerful presentation. Thank you very much for doing that, very much so. We knew that, but I'm glad other people recognize it too, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to Item C, Parent Advisory Council Recognition. Dr. Moran.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. During the 22-23 school year, we started our first Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council, and we were excited to continue that this year. We have parents who are representing each school in a leadership capacity. They attended bimonthly meetings throughout the year. They were provided with opportunities to weigh in and give feedback on a variety of different issues, things like our code of civility, vaping in schools, the Parents' Bill of Rights, the budget, and more. We actually put them to work on several occasions. We asked them to write crisis messaging so they could see the complexities in that work. We also had them help revise our new website and give feedback on what that should look like. And we have several of them here this evening, and we would like to recognize them for the hard work and dedication. They often took information back to their schools and helped disseminate that information amongst other parents in the schools. So, if you would, when I call your name, if you would come up front, and you can meet each of the board members. Our representative from Bonley, Jennifer Thomas. Our parent representative from Pittsboro Elementary, Ashley Patterson. Parent representative from Silk Hope School, Tricia Lasath. And our parent representative at Virginia Cross Elementary, Brittany Melgar. There were quite a few events happening at schools this evening, so several of our parents shared that they appreciated this opportunity and would love to be able to continue that work in the future. Did anyone else come in since I pulled this list? Okay, I think we got them. Thank you so much for...
Spring Athletic Recognitions, Mr. Blythe.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Jackson. For our spring athletic recognitions, I'm going to be asking our principals who are here in attendance to come forward, and we're going to start with Chatham Central, so I ask Ms. Dark, if you will, to come up and announce your year name.
Good evening. Tonight, we are here to recognize one of our tennis players, who was also the Conference Player of the Year, and that is Jacob Gillan.
I enjoy watching basketball. Thank you. Congratulations.
And now from Jordan Matthews High School, and Ms. April Burka, Dr. April Burka, welcome to present.
Good evening. It brings me great honor to introduce a leader on and off the field. Ian McMillan is here as Conference Player of the Year from the Jordan Matthews Baseball Team.
Congratulations. Good to see you. We'll just stay up, then, we got them coming, all right.
And now from C-4th High School, Dr. St. Clair will come, and we have several groups from C-4th. Most notably, we have the girls soccer team, who will be at the last, who just won the state championship this past Saturday afternoon.
Thank you all. I'm asking to have Coach Landon Jones introduce our baseball team. They made it to the third round of the state playoffs, and I'd like for them to come forward and introduce some of his players.
First, we have senior Tanner Morgan. Freshman Easton Sykes. Sophomore Colin Dorney. Sophomore Jayden Radar. And senior Dane O'Neal.
Oh, it's okay.
I also want to bring forward, you heard, I'm sorry, you heard earlier...
We're going to have to control this group right here, I can already tell. I, I think it's Tammy that's creating all this chaos, oh, no, I'm just kidding.
It's good to be excited. You heard earlier from Dr. Jackson that our golf team won state championship and had an individual champion, but we've got to represent it for our state champion golf team, Griffin Chin, to come forward, and I'd like for him to be recognized tonight as well. Make sure I don't miss anyone else from the golf team. Okay. All right, so our most recent state champions are going to come in here. I'm going to ask Coach Gio to come forward and introduce our soccer state champions. I want to coach.
I'm worried, I don't want to be like that soccer team that dropped their trophy off the bus. Okay, who's first? Come on up, Carson. Carson Ward, she's a sophomore. Luisa Olmos, another sophomore. Reagan Willauer, sophomore. We two number ones, the east and west. Lizzy Platt, freshman. M. O'Rourke, team captain, junior. Isabel Wood, junior. Taylor Wilson, junior. Sydney Nazzle, sophomore. Katie Leonard, sophomore. And MVP of the final. Natalie Jerkovich, sophomore. Lauren Jackson, freshman.
No pressure.
Emily Jump, freshman. Nora Atkinson, freshman. Anna Menkerson, sophomore. Guadalupe Gerido, freshman. Sophia Viana, sophomore. Caitlin Herman, junior. My assistant, Elizabeth Wood. Assistant Coach Vince Atkinson.
And Coach Gio.
So, Leonard, you said, "All but one player returns next year."
Oh, wow.
Wow, wow.
Well, in the paper I was reading that, you know, C-4th, this is the first year they've had graduates, you know, so, yeah. All right, Power of One Award, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Jackson. As you know, each month, we select a Power of One Award recipient to be recognized during our monthly Board of Education meeting. This award falls under our strategic plan, Priority 3 and Priority 5. Recipients receive an award plaque and a small token of our appreciation, and tonight's recipient will also receive a special Power of One Award pen, which only award winners will be able to wear. It is my privilege to announce our June 2024 Power of One Award winner, Ms. Michelle Hayhurst, lead teacher at One Academy. For now, my dear said, Michelle Hayhurst is a lead teacher at One Academy. Opening a new school has been a big task. Michelle has been an instrumental part of this process. She took the position knowing that she needed to be flexible and that each student's schedule and needs would be different. She's worked so hard to meet the needs of each student. She has put structures in place that allow for each student's individual progress to be monitored. She has worked with students and families to adjust student... She has worked with students and families to adjust student plans when they were not meeting their needs. She's worked evenings and weekends contacting families at times they were available to talk. She has been the glue that has held this program together, and she has provided the structures needed to give One Academy a foundation. Her leadership has been valuable, and she is truly deserving of the Power of One Award. Your June 2024 Power of One Award winner, Ms. Michelle Hayhurst.
All right, we'll move to our, oh, always not, that's always nice there. Wait a second, Dr. Moran, we've got public comments first. Oh, it's okay. You're all right. Sorry. I've already messed up on naming our superintendent again, so I guess this one looks nice. Well, I owe him big time now.
I was thinking maybe she has something to tell us in the.
It's okay, Dr. Moran. We'll move to our public comments period of time, and of course, you'll be here at the podium. You have three minutes, and our first speaker is Selena Lopez.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Jackson, and everyone present here today. My name is Selena Lopez, Youth Program Director at the Hispanic Liaison, Relingul Hispano. I'm here with parents and students to say gracias. Thank you for renewing our MOU with Chatham County Schools for the upcoming year. In the consent agenda, it was super quick, but we just wanted to make sure we give you a big thank you. Truly, there are no words to say how grateful we are to have your support in the work we do with our Latinx students and families. Thank you for the support we have. Thanks to your support, we have our first graduating class of seniors from C-4th High School. This Saturday, we celebrated our 19 seniors from JM and C-4th at our office in Siler City that graduated from our OLP program. We are excited to see these students take the next step in pursuing higher education. A hundred percent of them will be continuing either to a four-year university or community college to pursue their career goals. Two of our seniors will be going out of state on full ride scholarships for the first time in our history, one as a Quest Bridge Scholar and one as a Dream.us Scholar. We also have two Dell Scholars, one Guarantee Scholar that is a full ride to UNCG, one Bonner Scholar that will give the student a full scholarship to Guilford College. We have an Odyssey Scholar who will be attending Elon, who you met, he talked last board meeting, Andres, debt-free, as well as an Elon Fellow, who will receive $14,000 a year to attend Elon University. And finally, we have a Teaching Fellow who will be attending NC State in the fall. Hopefully, she will come back to Chatham County Schools to teach one day. As of now, our seniors have won over $350,000 in scholarships, and all of these accomplishments wouldn't have been possible without your partnership. So I just wanted to take some time today and say thank you so much for your support.
And our second speaker is, I'm hoping, let's see, Amy Acosta? Go on up and correct me right there, please. Amy, Amy Acosta, thank you.
Hello, good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Amy Acosta. I'm a rising junior at Jordan Matthews High School, and I'm also a member in the Orgullo Latinx Program. I have been a member since ninth grade year, since my ninth grade year. I am now one of the principal representatives of the JM group. Today, you all approved to have OLP continue in Chatham County Schools. For this, I would like to thank you. OLP changed my life. This program has taught me how to keep pushing to achieve my goals and by also going from a C and D student to a A and B student. I've also learned how to manage stress and anxiety, but also of learning more about public speaking and about my culture. And I have learned so many new things along the way. I'm so glad I'm in this program because it's taught me so many things, like making new friends or keeping up with my work and getting a real-life view of a daily life of a student, of a college student, while visiting universities and how to manage things on my own. I'm really thankful for OLP and want to thank you all. Thank you for allowing me, like, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to experience that JM. It truly means a lot to, a lot to me to have their support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You got a comment?
Yeah.
I'm afraid of these now. I'm kidding, go ahead.
Come on up, this will be quick. I just, I did, our first speaker made a comment, and maybe that number just kind of went over a lot of people's heads. Not too many schools can say, what was that number? 100%? Wow. And normally, we don't make comments, but I thought, that's, we gotta say something about that. That is a super honor to be able to say that. Thank you.
Dr. Moran, you can come on up now. She got, she got sent, so she's waiting. Yeah, I understand.
Just excited to share about our students, that's all. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this item is aligned with our strategic plan, Priority One, Curriculum and Innovation. You got to see a little bit of our Neon Krakens earlier. Our robotics team, the Neon Krakens, represent Chatham Early College and Jordan Matthews High School, and they're also open to other students in the county as well. The student-led team is in charge of all of their operations, including member recruitment, robotics design, construction, software coding, testing, and competition execution. They are learning priceless technical skills, professional skills, and social skills. This team participates in a number of robotics and STEM competitions and have received a number of awards and accolades. And these competitions are both state, national, and international in that there are participants from across the globe. We have with us tonight two of the coaches, Jennifer Hawkins and Candace Bailey, who will tell you just a little bit more about the team and introduce each of the students, and they can tell you more about the awards they've won this year.
Good evening. So I've been part of the Neon Krakens for six years now, and we've come so far in these six years, being able to be recognized and chosen for alliances. So you compete in the finals. We got the imagery award this year. We've gotten a lot of grants and sponsorships, and it's just the beginning.
I have a parent that never went away, I guess, and became coach. So eight years for me in doing this. So the growth that these kids make is phenomenal, and you just got a small taste of that tonight. So we're super proud to introduce who we have with us tonight.
So we do have 17 students that are part of the group, and these are the ones that were able to come out this evening. So we have Aiden. Blake. Kellen. Kayden. And then we have mentors that have been alumni.
Bring them all up, too.
All right. Luke.
Attending UNC Charlotte for mechanical engineering.
Joe.
Going to UNC Greensboro to become a teacher.
And we also have two of our parent volunteers here as well, Mike and Michelle Bailey.
Parent volunteers are essential, and mentors as well. teaches marketing and construction and everything else guru.
All right, Dr. Moran, PLS, spring updates, first reading, and that's Help Me Out Policy, what?
So the policy is to lead the schools, or the PLS is a web-based policy reference manual developed by the North Carolina School Boards Association. And so while we're doing the audit right now and bringing you a series at a time, this is their normal spring update, so we usually have a fall and a winter and a spring update. So this is a little bit different than the other series we've been bringing to you. This particular policy, spring update, has 11 policies for revision. Some of these policies require just slight changes in the footnotes or legal reference changes, and then a few of these require some decisions to be made, so I'm going to outline those two specifically. Policy 3620, extracurricular activities and student organizations. It requires an update related to homeschool students. New legislation requires that schools allow homeschool students to potentially play in sports. And so we're recommending Option Two, which is to allow homeschool students to play sports if they are duly enrolled with Chatham County Schools. As you probably remember, we have some students who are part-time homeschool students and part-time virtual academy students. If they are enrolled in two classes, they count as one of our students. And so we have traditionally allowed them to play sports in their homeschool. And so this would be in keeping with our current practice for virtual students. Policy 4140, foreign exchange students, is a new policy that we have not, until this point, adopted. We had an exchange student policy, 3570. What we would like to do is repeal that policy and adopt 4140, which is part of the School Boards Association manual policy, so that we're in keeping with that PLS structure. We would then add the items that we have in Policy 3570 as a regulation to carry out the foreign exchange student policy. And this would keep us in line with the policies to lead the schools policies. Those are the two biggest changes. The others, you have in your chart, it will show you kind of the change that's being recommended and why. Most of them are legal requirements and footnotes and reference shifts. Those are the only two that had significant changes.
Mr. Chairman.
Pardon? Yes.
This is a surprise. I'm bouncing off of him. I would like to make a motion to waive the first reading and go ahead and vote on this.
In his policy, I don't know. What's y'all's thoughts?
Is Adam would need to answer that, right? And he's not here.
We can waive, I know that. I'm just saying, his policy should, is it something, this would clear it up for the summer, am I correcto? That's, that's the biggest point. That's what the point you're making, right? Because we'll have some possible students that would take some courses that might be eligible for extracurriculars August the first.
It's totally the board's prerogative if you want to waive.
Is that a motion, Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Does anybody have any, well, I'll second it, and then we can discuss. Does anybody have any issues with the changes that we've been able to read earlier, but the one specifically that Dr. Moran mentioned here?
Just a point of clarification, there are others in the attachment that involve parental involvement and board member technology use. Are we, are we, are those included in what we would be waiving the reading on?
Also, most of those are.
Most of those are slight changes. So parental involvement, the only change is that we had to insert a link to a resource for parents. So we pulled from our Parents' Bill of Rights document, if you remember, we had a list of all the community resources. So we'll be adding that in. So that's the only change there.
Okay, good. So there's nothing that parents would need to have us read it more than once to have a voice in that? Okay.
Any other comments, questions? So the motion is to waive first reading and go ahead, and these spring updates, to go ahead and approve those. We have a motion, a second. All in favor with an aye? Aye. Any opposed, like sign? Thank you. All right. Nothing else on that, right? We're good? Okay, Gear Up Project, and of course, Dr. Moran, we'll start with you on that one again.
So this item supports Priorities One, Two, Three, and Five of our strategic plan. We have an opportunity to submit a request for a Gear Up grant in partnership with Winston-Salem State University. This is a seven-year grant cycle and could potentially generate over $2 million in funds for our school district. Gear Up started in 1998 and is a federally funded program designed to increase the number of students who are prepared to enter and succeed in post-secondary education. The Gear Up grant would fall within our Excellence and Opportunity Division as it really can work in tandem with our avid programming and many of the things that we're already doing with our students in our schools. So Mr. Poston and Dr. McFatter will share with you a little bit more about the grant details.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Superintendent Jackson. I am Dr. Jamie McFatter, an instructional program facilitator with Excellence and Opportunity. And as Dr. Moran mentioned, I am here to share information about the Gear Up grant. We have slides. I can start.
The technology's locked out now. I'm just kidding. You're good. Yeah, you're fine. Don't worry.
Family informational slides. So Gear Up stands for gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs. And as Dr. Moran shared, it was established in 1998 and funded through the U.S. Department of Education. The Gear Up grant promotes college-going culture for all students, beginning in middle school and continuing through the second year of post-secondary education. Next slide, please. The grant cycle will be for seven years with a possibility of $295,000 per year. There's a one-to-one dollar-for-dollar in-kind match, as Dr. Moran also shared, and this would include office space, use of district technology, use of copiers and other resources, professional development, and personnel support. There will be no out-of-pocket expenses anticipated to support this grant. Next slide, please. So this is the current fiscal chart for those LEA partners who are currently Gear Up Counties or Gear Up County Schools. So the funding source, of course, is the U.S. Department of Public Education. Winston-Salem State is the fiscal agent, and then these are current partners. So Guilford County Schools, Rutherford County Schools, Winston-Salem, Forsyth County Schools, IsoThermal Community College, and Forsyth Technical Community College. Next slide. So here in Chatham, these would be our potential Gear Up schools. Bonley, Bennett, Moncur, Silk Hope, Chatham Middle, and JS Waters. And these schools were selected based on the free and reduced lunch status of 50% or higher. This slide here tells us the impact at grade six and seven, so the grant would start at grade six and seven in these schools. So in Moncur, it would serve 43 students. Chatham Middle served 324 students. Silk Hope would serve 55 students. Bonley, 73 students. JS Waters, 48 students, and at Bennett, 36 students.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Chris Poston, Senior Executive Director of Excellence and Opportunity. Want to continue on with the presentation that Dr. McFatter started. Here's a model that shows that we'll begin, if we're the recipient of the grant, in 24, 25 school year, and we'll start at the schools that Dr. McFatter mentioned in grade six and seven. And then the cohort model will grow, and the beauty of this grant, that we will then track those students as they move, and then we'll even be able to track them in college. Next slide. Next slide. We want to make sure that we align this work to our strategic plans. So here, I'm in the lines for our One Chatham Plan and Priority One, Priority Two, Priority Three, and Priority Five. It's college and career exploration for all students in the grade level. Avid will continue to drive instructional practices at our Avid schools. Gear Up is really intentional about supporting families and doing community engagement, and most importantly, provide all students opportunities to explore post-secondary college and career Again, we want to make sure that this work and this potential grant is connected to all that we do here in Chatham. So here's a graphic that shows that this work will support our CTE program, our Teach Chatham program, our dual-language program, Avid, of course, and our Excellence and Opportunity commitment. I mentioned family engagement. Here are some ideas or some things that we would like to use this grant to fund and support in our school district. Some of these things are already occurring, but we want to make sure that these things reach even more families. Health and wellness resources, certification pathways for families, job and career opportunities for families, book clubs, information nights, the fast food, and other opportunities about engaging families in college, and again, additional parent academies, already connected to what we are currently doing. We also want to strengthen our site-based programs. Here are some suggestions that we will use this grant to drive and support. Parent workshops, academic counseling, job shadow opportunities, and again, more career explorations. Professional development will be at the heart of this grant, where we will work with our teachers and our students, and again, families. We will make sure we have some summer enrichment opportunities for our students, college figures, apprenticeship opportunities, and like we saw tonight, some STEM and robotic opportunities for families and students. So this is our Gear Up grant proposal. Hopefully, we're the recipient of this grant, we'll announce it in September, October, but wanted to bring this to your attention and see if you have any questions.
I think it's wonderful. Just getting more opportunities for more of our children, that's crazy.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, thank you.
All right. Dr. Moran, you're just standing up there, aren't you? That's okay. Parents' Bill of Rights supporting requirements, go ahead.
So based on state legislation and state Board of Education policy, all local education agencies must submit annually a reporting of the Parent Bill of Rights compliance requirements. The report is due September 15th, however, districts have been encouraged to submit those by June 30th. Chatham has submitted that at this time, it is attached for you to review. There are seven questions in this reporting document, and Chatham submitted that on May 22nd. Some of the questions just ask for us to put in our link to where we posted Parents' Bill of Rights, our guide to student achievement, and some of our policies that we had to update to make sure we were in compliance. And then there were a couple of questions about the number of inquiries related to Parents' Bill of Rights, the number of parental concern hearings that have been held in our district. And of note is that all of the answers to those questions are zero. We've not had any parent inquiries or any parent concern hearings related to the Parent Bill of Rights areas. And this was just for your information, so you could see that we have continued in keeping with the Parent Bill of Rights requirements.
Any questions? You might. All right, we'll move to action items. Local plan application for career and technical education, Dr. Moran.
So this is aligned with Priority One, Curriculum and Innovation of our strategic plan. The career and technical education program is funded by local, state, and federal funds. And as a result, every two years, we are required... Each CTE department is required to complete a comprehensive local needs assessment, and based off of that data that's collected, we write goals and next steps for improving our programs. Please note that the plan that is attached, it is a work in progress, so once you submit this plan, the Department of Public Instruction will continue to give us feedback, and we will continue to develop and update our plan. So you'll see that there will be comments from the Department of Public Education inside of the document as well, and then you'll see from time to time, we'll have comments go back in response to those. Dr. Burton will share with you a little bit more about the plan itself, and specifically the three goals that we've identified for the upcoming year.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Jackson. My name is Michelle Burton, and I am the Executive Director for High School and CTE. And as Dr. Moran said, it is once again, it's time for us to present our local plan. And so we did our comprehensive needs assessment by surveying both teachers, students, and families, and we actually had teachers come in as well as our business community to answer some questions about what pathways we should offer and how to better prepare students to be... have employability skills upon graduation or even before they graduate. And based on a comprehensive needs assessment, we came up with three goals. So our first goal is by 2026, Chatham County Schools CTE Department will increase the number of students participating in work-based learning opportunities by 10% to include all pathways. Currently, we only have two pathways that offer viable work-based learning every semester of each year. And that is normally our core construction and our nursing fundamentals. So we would like to expand that so that students have work-based opportunities in conjunction with achieving those industry-recognized credentials while they're still in high school, which will make them more employable upon graduation. Our second goal is by 2026, Chatham County Schools CTE Department will increase the number of teachers obtaining industry-level credentials by 10% to better prepare students to be successful on required credential assessments. So each course that we offer generally has at least one credential associated with the course. We feel that teachers can best prepare students to be successful on those assessments if they first have those credentials. And so we have teachers who have industry credentials, such as our core construction teachers, all of them are OSHA certified, and that is a certification that each student gets. However, we would like to increase that number in hopes to better prepare the students to obtain those credentials. Our final goal is by 2026, Chatham County Schools CTE Department will increase the number of students becoming completers by 10% through the use of career development plans and purposeful scheduling. So completers mean that... means that a student completes a basic level and a secondary-level CTE pathway. In Course 1 and 2, they're able to earn industry-level credentials, but by being a completer, they have more credentials and are more employable. In conjunction with that, legislation now says that every student between grades six and 12 has to have a career development plan. It is our goal to align their pathway or courses of choice with their career development plan. So beginning in sixth grade, students will take assessments to determine their interests and their likes, and then based on that, create a career development plan that can be revisited at any time during this school year, but can also be updated and changed as their interest changes, and this plan can follow them throughout college. There are no additional funds requested for any of these goals. We will use the funds that are currently provided to us by the federal, state, and local funding sources. Are there any questions at this time?
You aren't asking for more money.
I move that the Chatham County Board of Education approve the recommendation for Option B, alternative accountability model, and Option B for calculation... Is that the right one? No, 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 I'm so sorry. I wanted to... I just realized I opened the wrong attachment, and I was like, that's not sounding right.
Let me do it.
Yes.
I move that the Chatham County Board of Education approve the Chatham CTE local plan as presented. Now a motion, a second. Any discussion, any questions? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, like sign? Thank you. Thank y'all for all the work too on that.
That's exciting.
Item B, accountability model for One Academy, Dr. Moran.
So this is aligned with Priority One, Curriculum and Innovation, and it's really been an exciting year, this year, building and developing the One Academy program. I think as you have seen in our graduation programs, our second one is coming up soon. It truly is changing the lives of students and their families. And so one of the things that we have to do annually is make a decision about the way that we will calculate the school performance grade. And as you may recall, in the past, we've had to do this. We have the opportunity to elect participation in an alternative accountability system for One Academy to calculate that grade. And we have to do that by August 1st of each year. The current system allows us to choose between three different options, and here to give us a little more details about what each of these options mean, we have Ms. Darlene Reeve Costi, our Director of Accountability and Testing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Superintendent, Dr. Jackson, you can go ahead and approve this, save the man or me too. So there's three models. One model is the normal accountability system that we're accustomed to, that's Option A. Option B is a modified system, which is what we are asking for you to approve tonight. And then Option C allows school districts to create their own model and choose their own methodology for creating, which requires a lot of research on our end to find reliable data pieces that DPI would eventually approve. So Option B consists of three components. It consists of student persistence, so that accounts for 20%, which means that the students come back to school the next year. 20% accounts for school achievement, and in order to assure that that number is reliable, they actually take an average over three years, because we might not have enough students that fill particular tested subject areas. And then 60% of that would be calculated using EBS for growth. And in lieu of a letter grade that we're accustomed to, they would get a score of either progressing, maintaining, or declining. And then there's parameters and data rules around each of those three indicators. So that is number... That's the first portion that you were reading that we're asking approval for. The second component that we're asking approval for is that the students that attend One Academy, the data will stay with One Academy. The other option is that the data returns to the homeschool of the students, and in talking with our school administrators and district leaders, they all would prefer or recommend Option B, and that the scores stay with One Academy and we use an average of three years.
I make a motion that we approve the presentation.
Do you need some more specific?
Option B and Option B, am I correct on that? Yeah, Option B and Option B. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank y'all very much, we appreciate it. You get one off here, Dr. Moran. Item C, Avid contract, 24... 2024, 2025, Mr. Poston.
Yes, sir. Good evening again. Chatham County Schools continues to have a longstanding relationship with the Avid program. Currently, Chatham County Schools has Avid at 13 schools, Virginia Cross, Celumentry, Bennett School, Bon Lee School, JS Waters School, Silk Hope, Moncur, Chatham Middle, Pollard, George Moses Horton, Chatham Central, Northwood, Jordan Matthews, and Seaforth. And I would like to say, our graduating class this year of Avid students have so far received over $19 million in scholarship offerings, so we're really proud of them.
Wow.
We would like to expand the Avid program to the Early College and to One Academy for the 24, 25 school year. And total Avid for our district will be $85,719. And that's including the professional development, all the resources, and then the online piece and the support from Avid nationally.
I move that the Chatham County Board of Education approve the Avid contract, which includes the Early College and One Academy. Second.
Now a motion, a second. Any comments, questions?
Sir, you're not asking for any more money?
Yeah.
That's great, if you were on a roll tonight.
Yes, sir.
Actually, it is, because we're adding two schools, so yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's a...
But that's a good thing, I'm...
Thank you all.
We're trying to get them all. All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, like sign? He's young, he's leaving before we get through, right? No, you're good.
It turns out we didn't vote it.
Oh, you got me so excited.
You're fine.
Because of the inconvenience, or you just ascend, hey?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item D, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill for Certified Athletic Trainers Memorandum of Agreement, 2024, 2025, Mr. Bliss. Before you start, I'm gonna say, I think it's fantastic that they're able to do this, and of course, we've got the state Athletic Trainer of the Year in Chatham County too, so that's always a plus too, so thank you. Go ahead.
Very proud of this.
I'm not stealing your thunder, I'm just telling you ahead of time.
We recognizing her next month, but... So, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Superintendent Jackson, the East... East Carolina, sorry, I was just looking at East Carolina.
Thinking of the baseball game earlier today, I guess.
That's okay.
So UNC has been providing athletic trainers for us at Jordan Matthews and Chatham Central High School for the last two years. We are adding Seaforth to that, and in prior years, Seaforth was provided using a teaching position and using the model that we have in place at Northwood. And that person would come in, teach a half-day, and then be there till athletics was finished. And in addition to that, they were paid a stipend after school. The model that we've had in place for the last two years at Chatham Central and JM is they come for the after-school piece, and they're there till athletics is finished. But we get to split the cost of the position with UNC. And during the day, they're working at a facility, doing physical therapy and those types of things. All good, because it helps them do a better job for us when they come to work for us too. So a very solid model, based on something some of that a lot of other districts are doing across the state as well. We were having trouble finding certified athletic trainers to continue the other model at Seaforth, and that's why we're making this switch.
I move the Chatham County Board of Education approve the UNC athletic trainers renewal MOA as presented.
Second.
And David, it will be more money because we're adding Seaforth to that, but takes away the teacher part, I guess, or stipend or whatever.
The not-to-exceed dollar amount is $117,858, our share for all three together. This is a bargain.
And that's because the school is not adding any money, because he gave us a cap.
Well, that's wonderful. Always, it's a great problem. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Our next Board of Education meeting is Personnel Session on Thursday, June 27th at noon, and of course, our next regular session is scheduled for Monday, July 8th, 2024. You will have a motion to return to closed session for the...
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, if I may just share an update quickly on where we are with the budget, because I know that there are...
Go ahead.
Wanted to just make sure that everyone's aware that the county commissioners have in fact posted their recommended budget for the 24, 25 school year, and that that budget is public, and their recommendation is approximately $5.1 million for the school system of the $6 million that we requested. They should be taking formal action on that, it could change, but as of right now, that is the... in the current county's budget that is available for public review, and will be... should be voted on on June 13th. Just wanted to...
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
We have a motion to return to... Do we have a motion to return to closed session?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate your time. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate your time. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate your time.